No order for February 28, 2024. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warrant bills are signed up?
Yes.
Approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for February 28.
Second in.
All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting? We should have two weeks, right?
Yeah.
Guess you only have one for now.
One for now, okay.
The fourteenth, right, Sam?
So, yep, so I move to approve the minutes from the February 14, 2024, meeting.
Second in.
All in favor? Town administrator, weekly update?
All right. Just a few things here tonight. Look what I got, Tom.
Good.
So it is, looks pink, but it's gonna be blue. So they sent us, we just received it via FedEx, the sample. So we'll go through it and get them an okay and have them hopefully installed by next week.
Wonderful.
So it just arrived. I like the pink though, but she did say it'd be blue. Okay, not so much. Um, next is to, um, ask the board for permission to close the clerk's office to regular business unrelated to the election next Tuesday. Certainly if, as always, you know, we've tried this a couple of times on big elections, as always, if you plead and have a situation that, you know, you absolutely need, we'll sneak you in. But any business that we can prevent at the windows so that we can focus on the primary election would be helpful.
Absolutely.
We do have our schedule put together for the election. I normally just like to run through it with the board. This is a warden, so we have Virginia Shea and Sheila Conway, one Republican, one Democrat, that will run it. We don't need a moderator at this election. Check-in table is Don Van Syndrome, Gail Bovair, Republican and Democrat. Overseeing the ballot box, Jeanette Burse and Nancy Rumah, also Republican and Democrat. We are gonna have a town table. This is one of those elections where unenrolled can enroll in parties or just participate. So we always like to have a separate table to assist with voter registration. Bernard Broder will be running that. He is unenrolled. Check-in table will be Essel Gore and Virginia DeBoer, Republican and Democrat. Overseeing the ballot box, Bevan Corbin and Gary B., we like to call him. We appointed him last year, long last name. Call him Gary B. Anyways, Republican and Democrat. What was it? Was somebody gonna say it? Broxkovich? And then my town table in the afternoon will be Tammy Crampits, who is unenrolled. And then we have just one Republican and Democratic town. Anyways, even Keel, just like the state likes, scheduled for all day. Next is notice that nomination papers are going to be available in the clerk's office beginning on, March 4th, uh, March 5th is the day the office is actually open. So March 5th. We have District 2 Road Commissioner's seat, we have two school committee seats, Gardner and Stanton, that are due. And then we have Mr. McGurty's seat, and then the fifth selection seat will be available. So those papers will be available first of March, and they'll be due back to the clerk no later than April 12th. So there's a little bit of time to get that done. So if anybody has questions, um, come and see me. Next is just FYI, that if you haven't seen yet, the road commissioner did officially post the roads effective tomorrow morning? Or is it effective tonight?
It's effective today.
It was effective today, okay. So effective today, all the roads?
When was it posted? Come on up here.
I thought he told me yesterday.
When did you post it last night?
Yeah, I posted them last night, so they are effective for-
They're effective 24 hours from the time you posted. So in theory, they could have ran today.
Yeah, well, I told everybody they were getting posted last night.
But whoever you didn't tell could have ran it today.
Yeah, I know, everybody, I, I don't think there was anybody, but, you know, they were all today, so.
Posted officially tonight slash tomorrow. What am I hearing?
They're good for tomorrow. They're posted for tomor- tomorrow.
Yeah, they're the date was-
It was official today. What time did you post last night?
Oh, I don't know, like, 5 o'clock?
Yeah, so it's 5 o'clock this afternoon and it was posted.
So they are posted.
Thank you.
Uh, next is we got a notice from the Sheriff's Department. So the third and final detail was conducted on February 23rd in the areas of Youngs Ridge Road, Goose Pond, Milton Mills, and, um, he put Chaplain Corner Road, just saw that. Total of seven vehicles. I'm gonna assume that's a misprint. I'll reach out. Total of seven vehicles were stopped for speeding, one speed summons, and six warnings. Uh, so that wraps up the last authority that you gave me for the last block of them. So, um, I know that Mark Roy has been working to tighten up our numbers. And over the next week or so, maybe you can revisit that and decide if you want to fund some more.
It would be, I don't know how to get this other than sort of announcing it over the airwaves. Personally, I would love to hear from some citizens as to whether or not they want this to continue or not. It is an added cost, but we did this based on complaints and concerns expressed by citizens. Seems to have worked from my perspective. I don't know how others feel about it. But if people have a point of view out there, please send a note in to, to the town, and we'll consider that whether we continue or not.
Seems like every time they're doing it now, the numbers are getting less and less.
Yeah, in the beginning, they were quite high, and they have gotten a lot lower.
Yeah, maybe we take a break for a while and, you know, come back in the spring or summertime when there's more cars around. I don't know.
I guess a question, we've been switching where they've been.
Yes, yes.
So is it because they're aware? Is it because the roads that they're looking at are-
Well, they wouldn't know the roads ahead of time. They'd mix them up, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, like, roads that people may not traditionally speed and versus. I'd like to look at that and then-
We really ought to see what we got for funds.
Yeah.
Before we go too much further, so I'd say we hold off for just a little bit.
I'd say till spring or early summer, and we can decide whether we do something now or not.
Um, next, um, with Tom's advice, I wanted to talk to the board about, um, adding something to our website that we would call, a tab that we would call Community Events. We often have things in town, for example, Mrs. Minahan does the Super Bowl sliding down on the hill usually once a year. She has a no-cost Easter egg hunt. The fire department, which they really don't have to ask because they're a department of the town. But how does the town feel about, or how does the select board feel about us adding a community events list where people that are gonna assume it would be, these are free events that we could advertise there for people to see? Someone reached out to, to Dan, looking to have a couple of things added in the newsletter. And before we okay that, we wanted to-
Did I hear you say free events?
Well, I mean, that would be mine.
That would be mine as well. If, if people are raising money off it, I don't know that we ought to be using the town website for that.
But then you get businesses that wanna start advertising.
But what if people say, like, a fundraiser?
Yeah, a fundraiser. Yeah, I mean, set any-
I don't know, we should have a policy, so, 'cause once you start picking and choosing, um, somebody's not gonna be happy.
Yeah.
I like the emphasis on the community part, so maybe that could be part of, like, it's something that stays and stays and benefits the community directly. I think it's a good idea, just because so many people do so many things to help each other, and community yard sales and stuff like that, that-
Yeah, yard sales, that might be another thing that people would want. So what other types of stipulations would you like to see? We do have two pending, and the events are coming up this week. Not to put any pressure on you, but they, uh, they're hoping to get advertised, um, in this week's newsletter. There you go, I can tell you what they are, hopefully. One is a free movie night. Free movie night that's coming up on Friday, March 8th. It looks like it, there, you can buy dinner if needed for $2, but it's a free movie night in town. And the other one is, um, looking for, wondering if you would consider donating to this year's Easter egg hunt by dropping candy outside in a bin at a particular someone's, um, house.
Hmm, I think we're interesting. You know, we really need a policy, because, uh-
Does the request?
Yeah, I mean, I could, yeah.
I mean, the first one sounded fine, you know, it was no cost and-
And they come from the same, they come from the same, um, it doesn't matter who they come from, but-
Yeah.
The same person organizing both of them. The Easter egg hunt is free, she just takes donations of candy.
So, you know, the only, the only thing is, is if you go on the website, you know, I know the free thing is great and all that, but, you know, like, Apple Valley used to have their Apple Weekend, okay? People have Maple syrup Weekend and stuff like that.
Yeah.
That's stuff there where people wanna go on your website and see, okay, well, there's maple syrup shacks opening in Acton, you know? So, but they're making a profit on that, though, so, but that's something that, I think most towns would put in their website. So, but the problem is, and then it gets confusing because you go from that to, um, like those. You know, so, which is a little confusing, which I don't really, and that one there, I guess, movie night thing, but the other one, I don't know what they're asking for.
They're just asking for donations of candy.
Just candy donations?
She's doing the big Easter egg hunt. She's done it here several years.
Okay.
People just drop off bags of candy so that she can prep for the event and fill all the eggs.
Yeah, and it's gonna have a location and everything where they have to go, okay. I was just, the way it was read off-
Sorry, yeah, I was trying not to give, I didn't wanna-
Give it away, okay.
I guess, I guess, uh, you know, we ought to, I guess I'm fine with them personally. As a temporary measure, we need a policy.
Yeah.
And so as long as everyone understands that we're doing this just to sort of get it going and not burden it with too much rules, too many rules. But we're gonna need a policy, and that may cause us to limit this in some way, put some criteria in the future. So, um, you know, you may see something that happens now that we would never happen, let happen again, and so it's just, you know.
So the idea is that similar to this, that Creator will, will need to create the PDF and send it to us all ready to go. We're not spending any time or energy on it. We're just gonna upload this document and send it.
Yeah, 'cause I, I really think that some of the, uh, you know, you take the campground, the orchard up here, uh, what's that one? Cody's Orchard there, you know?
Oh, the goat hill, oh, yeah.
Goat Hill.
I think it's great to have.
Even Iron Tails, Willies, whatever, all these, you know, if there's events, we just gotta figure out how we're gonna do it and make it right, so it doesn't get sketchy on us, so.
And we'll put something under the community, um, the community tab, very clearly saying that these towns are, these, you know, anything listed on this page is not supported or promoted by the town of Acton.
Yeah.
You know, some sort of, so they know what's-
Yeah, a little disclaimer, just because, you know, I mean, when somebody wants to come to Acton, they'll go, all this stuff we could do.
All right, uh, it's all, oh, and a reminder that, um, next Wednesday, we're having a public hearing for our floodplain ordinance and our mooring ordinance. Which our road officer will be present to present the floodplain, and the board will present the mooring.
Nice, okay.
And hit Tom. That's all I have for this week.
Hey, Department head, community chair updates, any?
I got a list there.
Oh, you do, you're right.
Do.
Court of enforcement, zoning questions?
So last week, um, and you have your handy-dandy ordinance in front of you, uh, last week you had a question on-
Earth moving or something?
Yeah. You're interested, it's on page 23. I'm hoping a little later in the agenda, you're gonna make a recommendation on it, but it's on page 23.
So what I just provided you was a part of the body of the ordinance. That actually was amended last year by the vote of the townspeople. And it actually reads off, um, I'll read it for you, for 5.9.2 mineral extraction industry. Under permitted required, there is an exception, which is exception one. Uh, the removal or transfer of less than 1,000 cubic yards of material from or onto any lot of 12 months' period as permitted in the land use chart. Now, anything over 1,000 cubic yards is where it goes into conditional use. Now, if you go down, I also asterisked a couple of things that it makes, is exempt from the conditional use, which is construction. Uh, the removal or transfer of materials incidental to construction alteration or repair of building or, or in the grading and landscaping incidental thereto. So, like I said when I met last time, this was more of housekeeping. And because the land use chart was a separate part of the ordinance, not the body, I was putting it in as an article. And as written in the body, it's pretty much saying that anything over 1,000 cubic yards or over is a conditional use. It was 10,000 cubic yards.
Is there, is there a timeframe on this exception for construction and, you know, under-
As long as the building permit going, and the building permit's going, it was for two years. And then you can come in, if you exceed the two years, you come in 30 days prior, get an extension. Um, it goes with that, it goes with that, the kill, the construction permit.
So it's only associated with the building permit?
Yeah, it would be construction-
These exceptions look like it's broader than that. Am I misreading that?
Uh, well, well, incidental to construction.
Oh, okay, all right.
Incidental to construction alteration or repair of a building, or in the grading and landscaping incidental thereto, so I, um-
So-
In theory, if you wanna move more than 1,000 yards, you can go get yourself a building permit.
That's where I'm going.
People have to understand that 1,000 cubic yards is about 75 triaxle dump trucks. That's a lot of material.
I can move, I can move 2,000 yards in a day.
I get that, but that's a lot of material, Dave.
Yeah.
And so that's why, and-
It's not a lot of material.
Well, uh, Chapley is 150 cubic yards, and then it's a conditional use.
150 or 50?
150.
150, yeah. No, I, I think, I think at some point, what I'm saying is, with the idea of getting a builder permit, that's fine. I think we, we, at some point, we're gonna have to put a time limit on that. 'Cause, I mean, at some point, that might get, um, abused.
Yeah, right now, it's the 1,000 yards, it's good for one year, then next year comes over, 365 days, you're good another 1,000 yards. That's how it kinda, it's how it's written.
No, and I understand that. I just, I look at this and I, I'm like, okay, well, you know, if I'm gonna go grade my backyard, or-
And, and you can.
Someone's gonna say that, well, you moved more than 1,000 yards. Who's gonna tell me I moved more than 1,000 yards? I don't know anybody in this room qualified to do it. There isn't. So I'm not even qualified to tell you what 1,000 yards look like. I can tell you what it looks like.
So, uh, under B, uh, do, do, do these exceptions, would they permit someone to haul material off?
It's, yeah, so it's the removal or transfer of material, so it's, uh, bringing in or removing it.
So someone could move more than 1,000 yards under B?
If, if it's a construction site, yes.
It's a construction site with a permit.
It's a pretty decent-sized construction.
And the permits only last for two years?
Um, yeah, and you come in, if you need more time, and get an extension.
Well, okay. I don't know, does that go on at all?
No, I've never, no.
You're not aware of any situations, so I guess that's something for the planning board to think about if there, if there are concerns, but that's their issue.
Yeah, no, and, and like I said, this is more of housekeeping. It wasn't, it was no big changes to anything. It was, so.
No, I, and I, and I apologize. I just, I, I think the problem is, is what we voted in last year, I didn't agree with. And I don't agree with us either. So just because I don't agree with it doesn't mean it's not right, so.
Okay.
That's all. This is nothing personal or anything, I just-
No, no, I get it. It's, it's, well, it's kind of your industry, so.
Well, the issues that we've been having, a lot of it was shoreline zone. Okay, I can understand, that's right on the lake, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. But for years and years acting, if somebody had a pit down the street, you can haul $10,000, uh, 10,000 yards out of it, which nobody ever could, took track of it anyways, but, um, you haul 10,000 yards, and that's how the people pay their taxes, you know?
It was still supposed to be 10,000 cubic yards with a building permit.
With a building permit. We were hauling 10,000 yards a year, 'cause we were allowed before, before Ken Paul and all this happened. Uh, even when Ken Paul was here, we were allowed to haul 10,000 yards a year off our property, okay? Without having to go do, you know, and all this stuff.
Without a permit, conditional use permit.
Without a condition.
Then one year, then one year, and I remember this, being in the, in the back row of town meeting, and they were voting on that 10,000 yard, and he dropped it to 1,000. And one of the ladies that were on that plan, goes, "That ain't right." And it got voted in. That was a misprint on the paper at that point in time. That's what we believed, and the lady on that committee thought it was a misprint, and that's what happened. And it's just kind of rolled from there on out.
But the planning board has obviously taken this matter and passed on it, so.
Yeah, I mean, and like I said, it was voted on last year and approved, so.
Thanks for explaining it.
Thank you. Who we got next to you? APAT?
So Mike Corey is here. He's going to give us a rundown of the new system that looks like we're trying live, that's the light.
I see the light is on.
Off on the camera.
That's off the shot, I just had to move it. We established, um, we, we've been working on this for a couple of months now, trying to implement a more efficient way to cover these meetings, get them streaming immediately, get them on the internet for consumption as soon as possible. So we had Town Hall Streams here the other day, um, working with them directly to set up this infrastructure. And, um, it's quite simple. You simply turn the switch on in the back to on. In about 30 seconds, the camera will come on, and, um-
Is it delay?
There, yeah, there's a slight delay to-
That light indicate it's on?
Yep.
The, the red light?
Mm-hmm.
And where's the switch? Is it in the room or outside the room?
It's right above the, um, sign on the studio.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's just a toggle switch on and off. And we are testing it tonight, um, to make sure it's working and functioning. And I'm looking at myself right now on my phone from the broadcast. Um, you can go to Act, uh, you can go to TownHallStreams.com, and Acton is the first client based on alphabetized clientele. And you can pick, pull this meeting up right now.
So you're watching us right now?
If you go to it on your phone, make sure you turn your volume down.
Are you gonna, you're gonna have Dan put a direct link on the town's site, though, right? So they don't have to go to the other place?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a link on the website. We're gonna continue to archive, um, locally and on YouTube. Yeah, you wanna turn the volume down, you'll cause feedback on the microphones.
Yeah, I, I get it, I shut it off.
But yeah, we're operating, operation right now, and, um, we're testing it, and I'll be marking out the floor podium for, um, public speaking, so it's in the shot. But it looks good, it sounds good, and-
Yeah, getting there.
Is that the only red light, and that faces this way?
Mm-hmm. That's it.
Oh, yeah. Boy, that's clear as a bell.
So Mike has worked, been working hard on a document that I've asked him to put together for the department heads and committees. So we'll send that around prior to their meetings and make sure everybody understands.
We'll inform them.
If filming, whether or not.
And so that they have to, they have to still schedule meetings.
Yes, so the process is, the meetings are scheduled on the calendar, they're scheduled on the Town Hall Streams, the backend of their system. So when you turn the switch on, it goes to their system, and they're programmed and ready to capture the video feed. And if you're meeting, if you need to have an executive session or you need a break, you turn the switch off. The live feed is disabled. And then when you're done, executive session, your break, you come back, turn the switch back on, and everything just continues playing from where you left off.
So what happens if you schedule a meeting for three hours, and we go to three and a half hours? Without turning it off, straight, you know, no executive sessions. Will it continue to run live over the three hours?
As long as you've turned that switch on, um, the recording will continue to happen here locally. After the three hours, it will cut off, um, on the stream. Um, but we can pull that video footage back off the camera and then add it to the end of the video once it's complete.
So you're scheduling them with the town hall, right? I'm scheduling them on my end, you schedule them on there. So are we looking for department and committees to start giving us an idea, or are you just gonna go longer?
Yeah, in the instructions, it specifically says that meetings by default will be set to a three-hour window. Um, if they need to extend that, or, um, well, they can, it doesn't matter if they decrease it, they just turn the switch off. But if they need to extend it, they just inform, uh, APAT@actonmain.org. And, um, we can essentially, um, increase it, increase the time limit at that moment. If I get notified in time, or we can do it after the fact and add it to the video when it's complete.
The worst gonna happen is the live is gonna stop at three hours.
Right.
Shutting the switch off during that three hours doesn't extend that.
No, the, well, starting the switch off will turn the whole thing down.
Right. But if we came back out and we went beyond the three hours, shutting the switch off doesn't give you a break in the three hours.
Doesn't extend it.
No, no.
It's a three hour, three hour clock based on-
The window, like, our meeting, the meeting tonight was set at 6 o'clock, and the end window is 9 o'clock.
Six to nine, and that's it, okay.
So how are we training department heads and/or committee chairs and to do this?
It's a one-pager. I mean, it's-
So you've written up a, an instruction?
It's got a picture of the switch off is off, and there's no light, on is on, and there's a red light. And some basic instructions on scheduling, and if you need to extend the video, uh, the event, or if you run into an issue, just contact, um, APAT or Jennifer, um, and we'll, we'll try to take, fix it.
We need some kind of a sign or something put up that says recording-
Red light is on, watch what you say.
Yeah, but something on that idea. But I mean, like, right now, you got a camera sitting there, you know, we got camera people, and it's, everyone in the audience knows that it's being recorded.
Right.
But with the little camera up there in the ceiling and the little red light-
You know, we just put a little notice on the wall over here, so, you know, all official town meetings or, you know, committee meetings are being recorded.
Yeah, isn't there one that says that there's security cameras on premise anywhere?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm just, okay.
You got that hat covers it.
But, but in, just so I understand it too, so if somebody inadvertently turns that on and a meeting is not scheduled, it will record-
Locally.
Locally to an SD without a volume.
Right, with no broadcast, it's just locally on the, on the-
Without volume, you said?
Right, because the mics have to be turned, don't the mics have to be turned on separately?
There will be a, there'll be a static microphone installed once, um, it comes in, and, um, there will be no setup. You just turn the-
These will be gone?
Yes.
Okay.
There'll be a mic, there'll be a ceiling mic, and it'll be run to the back of the-
So anytime the switch is turned on, the mic's live?
Yeah, but everything will be-
To the camera.
Yeah, it would be, it'll be a closed circuit, recorded footage.
You said it's recorded to an SD card? Who has that access to that card?
Uh, myself and Town Hall Streams.
Neckheads here in-
It's in that, it's in that thing.
Oh, it's in the camera.
It's all, um, wireless, you know, network accessible.
Thanks for taking this on and doing this. I think it's a big improvement for the town, this work.
So what are you hoping to have, all meetings live and, so are you still shooting for March 1st, like you indicated?
Yeah.
That's Friday.
Well, you got, yeah, but you gotta wait for the, uh, things to come in, right?
Microphones?
Oh, that's true. We do have to wait for the microphones.
When they come in?
That, um, um, once the order gets processed. It should take three days.
Oh, okay, so we did, you got it.
He did send me an order yesterday, it's on my list. We'll get it done this week.
So it may not be next week, right?
No, might, might be first week.
Okay.
Cool, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Rec director, Sam, come on up.
Hello. Sam, Acton Rec Director. I am coming to you guys tonight basically to, um, finalize what our board has come to the conclusion of. Our baseball seasons aren't as prominent as they used to be, um, a long time ago. They've been steadily shrinking. The kids haven't been given the proper opportunity of what they could be doing. So that when they get to high school and even middle school, they're not even prepared for what's coming. So we have decided at our last meeting, um, there was four board members present. All four of them unanimously agreed on, um, only keeping in-house pre-KK for T-ball and first and second for coaches pitch, and sending third grade through sixth grade to Sanford. Um, and with doing so, they also wanted to, um, we also wanted to see about using the money that we had set aside for the field drag and then going into the uniform money, if we needed that as well, to offset. Because we normally charge $20 for a kid to play, and now this is gonna be $105 for a kid to play that some parents might not be expecting. So if we can cover that-
How much do you have, break that down again, well, how much?
So for uniforms, we had 1,500 set aside. For the drag, we had 1,700 set aside, giving us a total of 3,200. So theoretically, it could cover up to 37 kids.
So now you don't need a drag or uniforms?
No, because the other thought is, is, um, our board would like to basically just finish grassing in our baseball field that we have and make it so that we have extended soccer field over there.
So if there's a subsidy, will every, uh, family get the subsidy or just certain families?
Everybody in Acton.
Everyone in Acton. And so how much will that subsidy be?
Uh, it's $85 a kid.
How much?
85 a kid.
Are you giving 85 a kid?
Oh, the subsidy would be 20.
Oh, $20, okay, sorry.
That's what I thought you said.
So basically, the, the parents would go online, we'd end up getting a coupon code, 'cause this was the other thing of wanting to get it done sooner rather than later. Signups end on Friday. Thankfully with Sanford, they can go online and they can sign up. But they would create a code for us, a coupon code, so that when the parent would enroll their child, as long as it is an Acton child, um, they would enter the coupon code in, they, they would pay $20, and at the end of it, they would give us the bill of how many kids ended up signing up. I'm not expecting to come anywhere near that 37 kids.
So the town would pay $20 per child?
No, the town would pay 85 per child.
Yeah, do, David, it's 85 per child.
85 per child. The families would pay the 20, like they normally pay.
Well, 'cause what you said was 20 originally, and then I did the math, Kim.
Yeah, you originally said 20 per person.
Yeah.
They would, I said they would pay 20.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so the parents are paying the twenty.
Oh, I thought we were paying the twenty.
No, 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 no.
Sam, it, it would be really helpful if in the future, when you have something like this, you could put it in writing, so we know exactly what it is we're talking about here, because...
Did, it was in the email that I've sent twice.
And it had all the budget numbers in there?
It had all about how many kids we have, how much we would have to pay per kid, had all that breakdown.
It didn't, I'm...
It didn't say...
I did have to ask some questions about how many kids we estimated.
Right, I asked about the budget and stuff, but it didn't have the breakdown, like, to that extent.
Okay.
So what happens, so, so you're pre, so pre-Ked too, what happens, so you don't need uniforms for them at all?
We would just use the uniforms that we currently have. It's all gonna be in-house stuff, because we aren't league sanctioned, we aren't big enough to become league sanctioned. And it's really...
How much is the swimming? 'Cause we pay twenty dollars per person for swimming, right?
Forty-five, I believe.
You're paying forty-five now for swimming, and they're paying twenty.
And they're paying forty-five. It's a fifty-fifty.
So why wouldn't we do that with...
Eighty-five feels like a lot.
It's just where it's, they're, they're given three days' notice.
Well, that's not, that's not our fault. That's you guys' fault for that. This should've been brought up weeks ago. We know the baseball season was coming. And I think we did discuss that a lot in one of the meetings I was there, that this is something that when baseball comes, we have to be on top of this. And doing three days ahead is not on top of it. So we're kinda putting a spot here, but I have no, no issue. I would think doing a fifty-fifty. But I do disagree. You said something about getting rid of the base, the ball guy.
So what we had talked about is we would just use the field over at the middle school. We made sure that it was okay to actually use that field for pre-KK and for second.
At the same time, we have a rec field for a reason. This is for rec activities. If it's a school activity, fine, I have no problem with that. But, you know, that field was built with that there for a reason. We still have little kids playing T-ball and stuff on that field, right?
To, to give an idea...
K through four, three.
What's wrong with the field?
So to give an idea, this, this past year, we weren't able to use that for maybe half the season because it was always too wet, because that one side of the field caves down and always going from third down to home is always full of water, the home...
Why is it like that?
It's just the way the field is.
Well, I, I know how the field is. I, I redid that ball field once before, 'cause it needs to be worked, it needs material put in there. It needs to be brought up to grade.
That was kind of our...
So we don't discontinue it, because as a water pocket, we fix it.
No, but that was kind of our, our thought.
But if you get rid of it, then you'll never get it back.
Right.
And you still have T-ball, you have first, second, third, fourth still playing. I don't wanna depend on the school and have to worry about that later on down the road.
Is Will still here? Will, would it be appropriate to ask Will to take a look at the field and see what it would cost to deal with this drainage issue?
Well, I mean, whatever, don't matter to me, but I mean...
Why not have Will do it?
It's more so looking at the middle school level. We don't even have enough kids interested in middle school bas, uh, baseball. That's why we're not even doing a middle school team this year.
You know, I think they're more, David's concerned more moving.
Oh, I know, I know.
Opposed to the school field. If this, if the field isn't playable...
If we can do that, why don't we put a parking lot up there?
If it isn't playable... It isn't playable.
So David, are you thinking that she might still need the drag since K through two is gonna stay up there? Is that your concern that she's spending?
What do you buy for a drag?
Well, no, she's, last year, she budgeted for a drag.
I know, but we've never had one before.
No, we had budgeted one to actually keep the, the field at bay instead of having to go through every couple of years and really pull out every...
It'd be done every year anyways.
Yeah.
And every year, there should be, been money put aside to buy a couple loads of infield mix, you know, or, or every other year at least, but there's been no infield mix put in it since I did it. And that was probably ten years ago. So that's why there's subtle spots, 'cause it was done ten years ago.
I know, me and my husband have gone over, done a bunch of work. You've done a bunch of work.
But, but raking it out is not doing a bunch of work.
Oh, no, this was...
You've gotta replace the dirt that's there, you know, and...
Yeah, the point is, we got a field.
Yeah.
And we oughta make sure it's suitable to play on. And if it isn't, we need to know about that, so we can take action to fix it. Not, not sort of abandon it and send people down to the middle school.
And last year...
That doesn't make sense to me.
Last year, she presented because of the issues she was having. That's why she asked the board to put a drag in the budget last year. But now what she wants to do is take the drag money to offset the Sanford. So now we don't need the drag for the little ones.
You don't, you probably didn't need the drag in the first place, because it's always gotten by with what we've had. So I can understand getting away with the drag, 'cause it's not a necessity. Of course, anytime that it needs to be done, just all they have to do is call me. I'll bring my power rig and take care of it in a couple hours, okay? But you can only take care of so much until you can put material to it.
And have good material down there.
Okay, you know, it's like grading a road. You can't just grade it forever. It's eventually gonna need gravel. So, but, uh, I, I have no issue with getting rid of the drag, not getting the drag this year. But you're talking thirty-seven kids, and you just said probably nowhere's near that number?
No, and that was using both the money for uniforms and for the drag money.
So the uniforms, are, are you gonna take all the money from the, that, that, those uniforms included the younger kids too, right?
Yeah, we have some. If we're going to continue on and we don't need all of the money, basically the mindset was have the option to use it if we need it, hope not to, per se.
So at, at thirty-two hundred, which is a combination of the drags and the uniform, if you split the cost fifty-fifty like you do for swimming, so you're not, you're not picking one over the others?
I think that would be...
That's fifty-two fifty per child, so thirty, fifty-two fifty divided by the thirty-two hundred, you could sponsor up to sixty-one kids. You just said thirty-seven at most.
That was off at eighty-five.
So those numbers would work, and if we needed uniforms for the little, you could still do that.
Yeah, I think that'd probably be more realistic. I, I don't, you think that's gonna be an issue with the parents?
That I'm not sure of. I'm hoping not. Again, it's gonna be only Acton kids.
How many kids did we have last year that wanted to play baseball?
So last year, what I did is I took the numbers from third through sixth that we had. In twenty-twenty-two, we had nine kids. Last year, we, nine in that age gap. Last year, we had sixteen, so it was growing. And this year, if I take the numbers from what was left at, at second grade up through fifth grade, 'cause those will be now our three through, we would have twenty-two. That's if all of them were going to be there, and that still doesn't give us enough for two teams for each grade group.
So you just gave me a number of twenty-two, right?
Mm-hmm.
Where are we going with thirty-six?
We were trying, I was just giving an idea of a maximum.
Oh, just, yeah, well, that's, that's quite...
Worst-case scenario.
Yeah, worst-case scenario, we have this, so that, basically, we shouldn't have to worry about hitting that, is what I was...
Okay, well, yeah, well, I'm just, you know, we're, we're taking money from one line items there. And unfortunately, I know you, you had to inflate some, but you know, you're talking twelve kids extra that you would think might be playing, which probably don't exist.
No, it's taking it, so by doing the number that I did, I grabbed the numbers that were from the grade below that would be moving up to this grade.
Yeah.
And then knowing we also have a bunch of new kids in town.
Okay.
Sort of a change of subject. Do all the kids who want to play, are they guaranteed to play when they go to Sanford?
That's what we were trying to make sure. So for example, when they, when they come here, they know that it's the twenty dollars, and then they've got the max of the fifty dollars per family.
Is Sanford gonna...
Make the team? Is Sanford gonna accept all the kids that come?
Sanford will accept as long as they sign up by Friday.
Yeah, that's fine.
Which I wanna, if we get an answer, I'll post it tonight.
We're talking about whether or not they're actually gonna make a team.
That's right, yes, that's all. I just wanna make sure they can get on a team.
Yes, they will be guaranteed.
If the board keeps it fifty-fifty to match the swimming, and you have any issues, we say this all the time, if you have any issues that a parent can't pay the fifty-two fifty, they, they make mention that they can only pay the twenty, then you come see me and my neighbors, helping neighbors will fund it. We've done that in the past, but at least it keeps it the same as other sports.
Okay.
Send them my way. We won't ask any questions. We'll throw in the thirty-two fifty.
Perfect.
I do, I just, random question. Looking at the numbers that you gave us, it seems like it's gotten, you know, only a few students from sixteen to twenty-two and from six, sixteen from nine. Do you think that in the future, it could, if we kept the rate it was, it's gonna continue to grow as a program? And do you think that by putting students over in Sanford, it's now cut out that possibility of having our own program?
In my mind, the more we've thought about it and the more we've met about it with, as a board, we've kind of just come to the conclusion that we don't think baseball's going to be that broad of a sport for us anymore, because the kids have such an opportunity over at Sanford, at Sanford, plus we're also not league sanctioned. And it's one of those to, yeah, to, if you're not league sanctioned, we can play other towns, but that's only if those other towns want to play us. And by that, I mean, they're willing to go in and put all this paperwork in with the boards and everything and make sure that they can get days.
It's a huge advantage for them to go down and play the baseball at a younger age. You know, it's like my boys, they played soccer at a younger, you know, we put them, you know, they did the Pee-wee thing here for a little while. We coached and all that, but then we got them down there, 'cause, you know, you gotta make that transition from sixth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and then going to high school. You know, you've got that four years of that transition, instead of making that transition as a freshman.
Plus, they're gonna make, they're gonna make friends there.
Yeah, they're gonna meet other kids in Sanford.
Could we find other sports go this way as well?
Huh?
Could we find other sports go this way as well?
I don't think so. Our soccer program and our basketball program are absolutely crazy right now. Our cheerleading program is growing.
Basketball program wouldn't work, I don't think it would work for Acton kids to do that.
No.
That, that's a whole different ballgame.
That would be the Nason Center. That's not even Sanford itself.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, uh, AAU or whatever they call it.
Yeah, and we've, we actually, going from our younger kids all the way up through our school system here in town, those numbers are actually really good to give us teams.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't, we wanna keep whatever sports we can going.
Yes, yes.
Drifting in that direction.
Yeah, we don't wanna drift in the wrong direction, but if everything on the other sports are fine, then we're, we're good. So are we making a decision here?
I think the fifty-fifty and then if they do have difficulties to reach out and...
So it's, it's fifty dollars?
Fifty-two fifty.
Fifty-two fifty.
Fifty-two fifty, okay. Perfect, sounds good to me. I'm fine with that.
I'll post that out tonight. That way they can get jumped on it. And then I also wanted to make you guys aware that the cheerleading, the competition group, has just signed up. We are going to be going to three competitions. We've got March ninth in Kennybunk, March twenty-third in Turner, and March thirtieth in Scarborough.
Nice, great, nice.
And just for a quick clarification, I know you asked this, so competitive cheer, the parents buy their own uniforms?
Parents bought their own uniforms.
Regular cheering, that you're still doing, regular cheering, those are the ones that they borrow and give back?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've got a lot that we're going through. I've, I haven't been able to place an order for the regular cheer, because everything was on such backorder. But I need to replace a bunch of the uniforms that we have, because they had so much white on them that they are all stained and kinda gross-looking.
So maybe a darker color for the young ones?
Yeah, I'm looking for, trying to do, they had one style that comes in like this and just right here is white and here is blue. I'd like to do that, so that it doesn't have so much white.
There's been some, some questions and comments on Facebook, so...
Yep.
Because we see the budgets, so we wanna make sure that it's being spent.
Competition cheer, the, the parents, I mean, they only pay twenty dollars to, to compete. So the uniform themselves and the shoes and that all come from the parents taking care of it.
Like a dance recital.
Competitive chairs, like a travel chair, and the other ones are just for here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, fifty-two fifty.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Please, on update, Tom. Had an opportunity to spend some time on the school budget this week. Met with some representatives from the school. That, I think, was a good meeting.
Okay, Ed?
Nothing.
Wait, we... Dan?
I just attended the end of basketball and cheer celebration last night. I was at...
I, I actually attended a basketball game the other night. A friend of ours, her children playing, it was, it's like going, you know, going back in time, you know? Ain't done that in a while, but it was interesting. Good time. Okay, me, I have no, no update. So we are gonna go down to old business, twenty-four, twenty-five budget continuation.
All right, so you have your warrant in front of you? We are going to, we're gonna go to page twenty-two. Just highlight a couple of changes and hopefully get a couple of votes out of you. And it's ready to go. So Article eight is the article that Mr. Sivini just clarified. So unless you have any questions, hoping for a motion on that one.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt, or to recommend adoption of Article eight as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Are we gonna deal with Article seven?
No, not until after the public hearing.
Should we, I, I noticed some people here from the Lake, so, the Lakes, I don't, they may wanna, is that why you folks are here, dealing with Maury? Would this be an appropriate time for them to comment on that or not?
I don't, we got a public hearing coming up. I mean, I mean, unless you really want to, I mean, uh...
I mean, they, we'll be open to changes next week too. They can, the document can still be changed next week, and the board has intentionally skipped it, because they wanna hear from you.
Yeah, we're just hoping to get, uh, everybody's opinion all at once, instead of, you know, a little bit of, if, if you don't mind.
That's fine. I just, I could see who was here.
All right, so, okay, we did that one. We're gonna jump to page twenty-eight. Some of these they did last week, so those are all the school articles. Article thirty-four. So we had a lot of conversation on this one last year, uh, last year, last week, it felt like so long ago. After speaking with Mark Roy, the recommendation is to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to make application for and execute any documents related to grants or donations, to accept any grants or donations or fees appropriate, and appropriate such funds to their designated use, so long as they do not require matching funds or encumber the town in any way. The treasurer shall be notified of grant applications and a copy shall be kept on file in the treasurer's office, period. The rest is getting struck out, all the Mema FEMA. It is a grant. You're really saying the same thing twice? Not necessary. Motion?
Make a motion to recommend adoption of Article thirty-four as written.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, Article thirty-five, we left out last week solely because we weren't gonna, we weren't sure if there was, something was gonna happen with that FEMA reserve, but it doesn't affect thirty-five at all, which is to see if the town will vote to carry forward the following fund balances and allow balances to be appropriated to the designated department. the following fund balances and allow balances to be appropriated to the designated department. APAT, cemetery, earned paid leave, forestry and conservation, forestry reserves, LRAP, also to authorize the town to carry forward but not appropriate the following articles: ambulance, capital improvement, dam capital improvement, fire department capital improvement, rec capital improvement, and, ooh, ARPA funds should be scratched, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that should be gone because I'd zero it out.
Right. So I'm still gonna get a motion from me and get that-
Well, we can make a motion.
As amended.
As amended.
Yep.
Make a motion to, to recommend, uh, passage of Article 35, uh, as written and amended.
Second.
All in favor?
So I'm gonna do as written with that removal so I don't have to write amended in the word.
Removal American Rescue Plan Act.
I'm sorry?
Any way you want.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. All right, Article 36. Okay. Uh, this was also rewritten with, uh, Mark Roy. To see if the town will vote to transfer the unexpected balance of the FEMA Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund into the unassigned fund balance and terminate the fund. This money that's been in the years from previous emergencies that has already been spent should have been accounted a different way, which Tom can give you the detail on. He's got a plan going forward, but essentially we do not need this reserve anymore.
Should I speak to that now or?
Absolutely.
Great. Um, the way the process works, as I understand it, is if we think we're gonna have, if we feel we've had an emergency that would qualify for FEMA funding, um, then we would put together a grant application that would include a documentation of all the expenditures that were actually incurred. So when we submit that, that documentation and that grant, hopefully we'll get a grant for that amount of money. So we've already demonstrated the money's been spent. Well, what's been happening is that money has been being placed into a reserve account, even though the expenditure, and, and it just sits there and it accumulates. Yet, all those expenditures were basically covered with town revenues and effectively they've been covered out of our undesignated reserves. So at this point, we just say, in, uh, that in the future, when we receive these revenues from these grants, we will just recognize them as revenues in the year they receive and they will, those revenues will flow into undesignated reserves. So what we want to do now is fix the accounting that was done, uh, to really recognize that those monies shouldn't be in a reserve for FEMA. They should be in undesignated reserves. So we want to move the money from A to B.
Well said.
Okay.
Motion?
Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept or recommend adoption of Article 36 as read.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. We are off to, page 32.
Page 32 or Article 32?
Page 32, Article 44. Um, thanks to the approving of Mr. Will Langley. He, um, pointed out that, um, inadvertently somehow the winter maintenances from 22, 23 got carried forward instead of the 23, 24. In 22, 23, you appropriated 96, 811, I believe it was.
Yeah.
Last year, or in the current year we're in, you had increased it by 30. We told him we were gonna flatline him. So that number's been adjusted to the 126, 811, which is what it should have been.
Glad you caught that. We, um, I saw the regular number. I, I forgot that we had increased it a year before. So I was used to seeing that number, but, um, it's all good, right?
Yep, that's the number.
Wasn't intentional. It was, oops, I'm glad you caught it.
So we've added those three numbers up. They equal to 409. So we're looking for a motion to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate 409,747 for District 1, District 2 winter maintenance in sand and salt stockpile.
I move that we recommend the adoption of Article 44 as written.
All in favor?
Excellent. Uh, we are now up to Article 47 that needs your attention. Uh, this one, when we visited it last year, had, um, the word culture in it. We have clarified it to read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate 82,997 for recreational, APAT, cemetery, forestry, and conservation. We have spelled them out and that bottom line you see, underlined, um, spells out cemetery, forestry, and conservation.
I like that a lot better.
Yeah, it's clean up.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend adoption of Article 47 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. And then 48, um, we also put off because we wanted to, uh, spell these out a little clearer, so I'm not gonna read them, but to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate 94,880 for community service. Uh, this covers your health and welfare, your library, and all of the social services.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Article 48 as written. Recommend adoption of Article 48 as written. Second. All in favor?
All right. So David and Dan is abstaining?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm abstaining.
Yes, I got that.
So should we take another?
Yeah, I'll take another vote.
So all in favors, two, opposed, zero.
And I abstaining. I abstained last time. I forgot all about it. Right in the moment there. Thank you, Jennifer. They're probably not a big deal.
Yes, sir.
Hope Town Hall goes, Town Meeting goes there quickly.
Yeah. So, uh, the plan from here, just to update the rest of the board, um, Warren and Finance is meeting with the school committee on Thursday. They're gonna vote on all of the school articles that now have been embedded into this one massive document. Um, they'll make those recommendations at the end of the meeting. They're going to revisit probably about five of our articles, um, some that they asked for more information on, the road one that, um, they don't know about yet, but, um, I'm planning on scooting over there and joining them to make sure they have everything they need.
So I know we have our new business D, which would pertain to what?
Yep, I thought you might want to go back.
So you want to go back to that afterwards?
Yeah, if you, if that's the direction you give me, we can add a 50.
Okay. Well, why don't we do it right now?
Okay.
Why don't we, um, skip E, our new business, no, not E, D. Okay, um, Arnold Murray email. Okay, uh, it's about the, um, APAT.
All right.
And why I'm bringing this up, it has something to do with the warrant.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
So we received an email, um, from Mr. Arnold Murray, um, saying that upon review of the minutes of, I'm gonna say January 10th to 24, I propose a review of the cable franchise fee. Around 2010, when cable was available to the residents, a fee was added to their cable bill to fund APAT. This was justified in that the people who had cable TV would be able to watch the videos recorded of Acton events or channels exclusively on 26. Now channel 26 is obsolete and has been for some time. Videos and announcements are available via the internet to anyone and whenever you want to watch them. The revenue from the cable in 21 was 35,000, 22, 33,000. I do not gain any advantage of paying 699 a month for a fee of products of channel 26. The proposed new system has the ability to stream live and archive recordings, which covers my requirements. My request is that the franchise fee be abolished and the total cost of APAT will be funded totally from the tax, taxes as all videos are available to everyone on YouTube and you can choose when to watch. This request applies to whether we change recording systems or not. The present system penalizes certain citizens for having cable television, whereas everything on channel 26 is available for free on the internet. At a minimum, an opt-out of paying a franchise fee. The channel itself refers viewers to the town website for viewing. So after speaking to Tom, who was the liaison to cable, uh, we reached out to Fran Bradley, who is the Director of Government Affairs. And as he indicated, Jennifer, as I explained on the phone, the franchise fee under federal law is to be the compensation for the use of the town right of ways. Federal law has capped the amount the franchise fee can apply at 5%. The town of Acton during the last renewal elected to take 4.5 in franchise fee. Under the federal law, the cable operator is to pass that franchise fee onto the billing statement. If the town elects to do so, they can decide to utilize a franchise fee payment towards the operation of the peg channel if they want, but the main usage under federal law is for administration. The town has the option to increase or decrease the franchise fee payment up to the maximum allowed of 5% or decrease it down to zero. They would need to do this through an amendment of the franchise agreement, which would need to be signed by both parties. Franchise section is discussed in Section 10. So, those are some options for you.
Um, I think back when this was done, uh, cable was sort of the only option for people and that was evident by the level of revenue we were receiving from this franchise fee. It was over $40,000, I recall. This year, it's down below 30 and that's because we have a number of people that are no longer taking cable services. They're streaming or doing whatever they do. Um, so we're taxing a few or portion of our citizenry, taxing a limited number of them and to help, and it's going to the benefit to lower taxes. That doesn't seem fair to me anyways.
Everybody can get this out of the window.
Everyone can get the, you know, the, the, the streaming will all be available. We'll still have our public channel. The public channel is not conditional upon this fee. Public channel will continue to be there. Um, personally, I would forego the revenue and anyone who gets cable will get a, what's that, $84?
A year.
Eighty-four dollar a year reduction in their cable cost. Um, personally, I think we ought to put it in a warrant and let Town Hall, Town Meeting decide what they want to do. But, um, you know, it would have my recommendation to eliminate it.
That's why we brought this up, because we were dealing with a warrant.
Yep.
And, um, we were talking about it. Um, I, I agree with him.
Makes perfectly good sense.
Well, because the problem is if we turn around and say, no, we, we're gonna take it, you know, we're gonna stop doing all that $30,000 a year that's going on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think this is, I think Tom's right. This is something the taxpayer ought to be making the end decision on.
Yeah, when it's, when it first started, it was like, I don't know, $48,000 or something like that we were getting.
It was a lot, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what put together the cable and paid the employees and everything, but now, now that it being down under, under 30.
Yeah, we weren't paying $200 a month for your cable bill either.
No, exactly. But, you know, with it down under 30, it's, um, more like 28,000.
So what we're talking about doing is adding, uh, an article at the end, at the end there. So that's something, how are we gonna work that, Jen, next week? Can we vote on that?
Yep.
I, I think it would need to authorize the selectmen to amend whatever agreement you said was in it.
Cable franchise.
The can't cable franchise agreement to, uh, to lower the franchise.
Lower or abolish it?
Let's probably abolish it.
Whatever. Just set it to zero or abolish it, whatever the lawyers want to do. And, um, and, and just recognize that there'll be a reduction in revenue to the town of X amount of, X amount of dollars and-
I, I, I myself would write the article to abolish. Yes, one or the other.
See the town will instruct the-
Then it will never come back.
Never have to worry about it. It is what it is. So, plain Jane. So.
Yeah, because we already have the right to set it at whatever level we want.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
So if you, you'd actually just have to write it to abolish it and that'll take care of that.
See the town will, see the town will vote to instruct the select board to abolish the franchise fee as set by-
This will be something now, you know, we, we would have to have that written and off to the finance committee by the next meeting, right?
Well, so they're meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah, so it doesn't work very well.
Well, it, we'll be all right because they also set another meeting for after the public hearing, should they, uh, so there be changes to the mooring and the flood plan. So.
Oh, yeah. So when we vote on that, we could vote on that.
I mean, so, but I, but I think that if I, if I hear you all and you're all on the same page about the abolishing it and Tom and I can, can work on the article and have it written by tomorrow night, happy to present it to them.
Pretty straightforward.
I think this can, if you want to write something up and I'll look at it.
Perfect.
Maybe you get counsel to look at it. I don't know, whatever you need.
We could have it to them by tomorrow night as well.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, so I guess we'll go back up to, uh, what we did, Erica, uh, Freedom of Information Request, new business.
Okay, so couple, uh, the first one, uh, sit hello Jennifer. In accordance with the main Freedom of Information Access Act, I hereby request the TD Wealth Financial Statements for the Town of Acton for December of 2023 and January 2024. These are typically between seven and 11 pages. Thank you in advance, Phil Caruso. Uh, this one came in right after the meeting last week. I reviewed it with Tom. It's already been completed. Just an FYI to you guys, that information's been sent off. Uh, the next one came in a day or two later. Uh, hello Jennifer. In accordance with main freedom of access, I hereby request the Partners Bank Statement Balances Only Summary for the Town of Acton related to savings and/or investments in parentheses CDs for December of 23 and 24. Um, I reply, got a little bit of clarification. Tom answered some questions for me. I think we're good to send this off tomorrow.
Good.
Okay. We all set with that? Abatements?
You have a, um, abatement denial from APAT 42, Lot 16. Uh, the assessor has reviewed the property in comparison with other sales and he feels like they are justified at the current value of the asset.
So you're gonna need a motion here to?
To sign it and deny the abatement.
Sign the denied abatement?
Yep. And there is, um, in the last paragraph, uh, there's discussion about what the property owner can do. There's a next step if they want to appeal.
I'm sorry, you probably said this, but O'Donnell has looked at this.
O'Donnell's wrote it.
They wrote it. So we're all, they're all set. Okay.
I'm just the middleman.
So I'll, I'll make a motion. We sign the, uh, the O'Donnell's document for the abatement, the rejection of the abatement.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, figured I'd do it so I can sign it and move it on. What's today? 28. 24. 2024.
Yes.
Want to screw that one up. Been a long day.
Abatements, animal welfare contract.
Animal welfare contract. That must be, yeah, yeah.
Every year we sign it.
Yep.
We sign it every year. Go ahead somewhere to take the dollar.
Yep. Awesome. I'm mapping a lot on there, but it's all good. Okay, we're gonna go to animal welfare contract.
So every year, the, uh, Animal Welfare Society in Kennebunk, uh, provides us a contract. We're required under state law to provide some type of shelter for animals that your animal control officer may pick up. Um, the number, nothing has changed in this. It's, it's word for word, except for the fee calculation. Um, I've pulled the last two years, should, should you want to see them. The per capita has stayed the same. It's the population that, uh, went up about 70. And when I reached out to her, she said that, um, the state domain informed them of updated, um, census numbers. It's only 70 people, so it's, it's, um, I'm surprised if they got an accurate one. It didn't go up more. But this, so the fee calculation this year is based on 2,671 people.
Ah.
Times a $1.46 capita. Last year, it was a $1.46 capita based on 2601.
So, so the increase is what?
70 people. Oh, the total overall, 38, um, $98 and change.
It hasn't gone up for a while.
No, it hasn't, yeah. And like I said, the, the per dog, per person is, stays the same. It's, I wonder where they got that increase on the people, but.
Well, I mean, it was a census.
Well, I know, but it's just an odd number. That's not the number they gave us, but mine's much higher, so I'm gonna go with that and-
Yeah. We'll take the low number.
Yeah.
They presented it to us. Looks good.
I'll make a motion. We sign the, uh, contract with Animal Welfare Society. Second.
All in favor? We, well, we're, we're gonna be making an appointment, so I'll do public comment after we come out of executive session. So, um, do I hear a motion?
Can we do that now? The public comment?
Uh, I wouldn't do the public comment because we're gonna come on, actually make a decision.
Okay.
So, um, so, uh, do I hear a motion?
I move that we go to an executive session, 405, 6A1 Personnel, um, Treasurer Position.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we will be back. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we come out of executive session, 405, 6A1 Personnel, Treasurer Position at 7, 27?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so, uh, we went in, uh, we had, obviously we, our treasurer resigned on us, so we, we discussed about that. So do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, appoint, um, Lauren, I'm sorry, what's her last name?
Hazencamp.
Hazencamp.
Hazencamp, um, as treasurer for a period of two months.
May 1st.
Through May 1st?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, effective immediately.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, and we'll sign that up. And we have, we have an appointment to make.
So if we can just piggyback on that because I know some people do watch it, while he's, while they're signing that, the deadline for payroll and bills, I'm gonna send a memo out everybody, to everybody tomorrow, is Mondays at 10:00. Oftentimes, we, people wait until Tuesday to put them in, thinking that nobody's here on Mondays. During then, this transition period, uh, we are going to be working Mondays to be able to stay ahead while we fill these positions. So it is imperative that everybody get it in by 10 o'clock on Monday, or we'll wait until the next week. We need that time to get the job done.
I would send an email to each department and let them know that.
Yeah.
Um, now we're talking about an election clerk appointment for Bevan Corbin.
Yes.
Uh, like to make a motion to appoint Bevan Corbin as an election clerk.
Second.
All in favor? And thanks for the, all the people who volunteered to do that. Democrats and Republicans.
And unrolled.
Okay, so let me see here, I think. Public comment. I don't see any public, Ellis,